Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the first meeting of the Health, Overview and Scrutiny Committee. It's great to see so many of you here, and thank you so much. We have this morning, we're going to be talking about immunisation, and we've got Ash Banerji. Good morning, Ash. We've got Matt Fung, good morning, Matt. Will Taylor, good morning, Will, and Lisa McNally, our Director of Public House. Good morning, Lisa. Thank you very much. We also have in the room colleagues from Healthwatch. Good morning, Simon. Good morning, Victoria.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for your attendance, and welcome to members of both the district, city and borough councils, in addition to the county councillors here. This is a really important opportunity for you to hear what's going on, not only in the health economy, but also for us to be able to try and influence the outcomes for the residents of Worcestershire. So, without any more ado, we'll move to the first agenda item, which is apologies for absence. And we have apologies from councillor Nick Price, the CMR councillor Sir Tindebell, councillor Chris McSweeney. And we have no other apologies, do we, Sam?
No, we don't, chairman.
Thank you very much indeed.
I don't wish to express an apology, but I do wish that we ensure that we have our full complement of members. At the moment, it looks as though, if I'm right, we have two vacancies from the county council, and I would wish to urge whichever group they belong to that their leader is made aware of our concerns for vacancies that currently exist, because we need to have a full complement. We need to have a full team here.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Wells. The leader of Reform is aware of these vacancies, and I'm told by the officers that she's working to fill them. Thank you. So, I just want to remind you all that we need to keep the topic very strategic. We need to not talk about personal issues, but we need to raise those strategic items with a real passion for getting outcomes from their objectives for our residents. I just want to raise that at the top of the meeting. So, any declarations of interest, please, and any party whip? No? Thank you very much indeed. Public participation? We don't have any this morning. So, I'll move swiftly to agenda item four, which is minutes of previous meetings. And as this is the first meeting, I just want to thank councillor Brandon Clayton for his chairmanship of this committee. He unfortunately is not serving on this council anymore, but thank you very much to him, and the team that served over the last four years. And also councillor Bakal Kumar, who was the previous vice chair, who's kindly taken on the mantle again. So, thank you, councillor Kumar.
I'll pass your thanks back to Brandon when I see him next at Reggborough Council.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Frye. I really do appreciate that. And two other members are not here as well, including the CMR councillor David Ross. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank him for the work he carried out for Worcestershire residents, too. So, we don't have people in the room that were actually the original meeting, apart from my learned colleague on the right-hand side.
Councillor Tom Wels was there.
Yeah. So, are you happy that we sign these off as a true accurate record, please? Thank you very much indeed. So, this morning, we're here to discuss routine immunisation. As I've said, we have Ash Banerji here from NHS England, and he's representing the Midlands area, and welcome. Are you going to start this off, or Matt Fung, are you going to begin this topic?
I'll start us off. Thank you very much for the invitation today. So, I will take the papers read, but just talk through some of the key points. So, I think just as a broader context, vaccinations are there as a way of protecting people from getting vaccine-preventable diseases, and these diseases cause, you know, human suffering, but also pressure on NHS services. So, that's what vaccination is all about. They're incredibly effective. It's said to be the second most effective public health intervention after clean water. And in the paper, we show how there's been a 99.5% reduction in measles cases related to use an MMR vaccine. So, it's really important that we make sure that the Worcestershire's population is as protected as possible. I just want to give a bit of context around vaccination programmes. So, we have routine programmes offered to, right across the life course, so to children, to pregnant women, and to older adults. Some are seasonal, and some are offered all year round. Over the last few years, there's been certain patterns. It's really important that we get good uptake, because the higher the uptake, the higher the level of protection. Since during the pandemic, there was very little mixing of individuals. So, what we saw is most vaccine-preventable disease, the number of cases fell very dramatically. We hardly had, for example, any cases of measles or pertussis during the pandemic. And that actually gave us some legacy protection as well. But what we've seen the last couple of years is that protection is going, and we have got kind of people asking more questions about vaccinations. That's probably how I would characterise it. So, there is a kind of concern that vaccination rates will fall. So, today is about just making sure that we can all work together to keep those levels up high. In the children's programme, generally across the country, we've seen a small decline over about 10 years. Worcestershire actually has been quite well protected from that. So, Worcestershire hasn't had the same level of decline as other areas. In the school programme, we have seen a decline during the pandemic, which isn't a surprise, because a lot of schools closed. But we haven't had recovery back to the pre-pandemic uptake figures. But again, Worcestershire is better than other areas in that the level of recovery is higher than in most other areas. The reason it's important to get high uptake is not only to protect yourself, but we have this concept of herd immunity. So, the idea of herd immunity is that by having a vaccine, not only do you protect yourself, but you protect others, because if you can't have the disease, you can't spread it to others. This is especially important for people who are immunosuppressed and can't have, say, live vaccines themselves. So, we have a concept called hesitancy. So, hesitancy, or vaccine hesitancy, is where people either decline or delay vaccination despite access to those services. And we talk about the three Cs of hesitancy, and I think it's quite a useful concept to think about. So, the reasons people either decline or delay vaccinations is related to confidence, complacency and access. So, first of all, you need, and it's kind of hierarchy, so from the beginning, you need confidence that the vaccines are safe and effective, and the NHS services, and the NHS, you're confident in the NHS delivering those services. Complacency means that you believe the vaccines are safe and effective, but you may not believe that they are that important for yourself. Do you think other people get flu, it's not really something for me to worry about. And then the third one is, you believe vaccines are safe, effective, you need them, but you struggle to get access. So, confidence, complacency and access. And I think what we've seen is that previously vaccination was very much almost an automatic thing. So, you know, it was a societal norm, and more and more people are asking more questions. And we just need to make sure that we give people opportunity to have those questions answered when they go to the GP or go to the pharmacy, et cetera. So, that's the broad context. I'll just tell you about a few kind of things that are coming up in the vaccination world. So, it's a really key part of winter planning this year. So, we know that what we don't want is the hospital wards, and A&E is being full of people with flu, RSV, which is Respiratory Syncytial Virus, or COVID. And actually, if we can get those rates high, we can help with the NHS resilience. So, winter planning is essential, and vaccination is a key part of that. We've got some new childhood, some new programmes being introduced. So, within sexual health services for high-risk bisexual men who have sex with men, we're introducing the MPOCs vaccination and the gonorrhea vaccination from September. In the childhood programme for under fives, we're realigning some of the vaccinations so that they better protect children. Two things I'll mention. One is that we are bringing MMR forward from three years, four months to 18 months of age. We think that will protect more children before they enter school. And we're also waiting policy decision on whether to combine MMR with a varicella, which is a chickenpox vaccine. So, we may potentially have a chickenpox vaccine in January, but we're awaiting the national decision on that. Worcestershire does very well. So, within the paper, we have shown the figures in terms of uptake and compared those both to the national key performance indicator criteria and to other regions as well. Worcestershire is consistently higher than the national or regional figures for most or all vaccinations. But we also know that vaccination rates vary due to demographic factors. So, for example, they tend to be lower in more deprived communities, in certain ethnic groups, those with disabilities and other groups. So, I think, so bringing this together, the key message for us are, so Worcestershire is well protected, but we need to maintain or increase that level of protection, because we're still not at the full 95% herd immunity level that we need. And we also know we need to target some of those communities where uptake is low. We are blessed in Worcestershire by having very good relationships, because this really needs close working between NHS England, the ICB, local authorities, the UK Health Security Agency and other partners. And we've got those good relationships, especially with a view towards, currently NHS England is the Commissioner, but from next April, the ICB will become the Commissioner as part of delegation. And I think my final point is that we're on a kind of journey where we need to respond to people's questions about vaccinations, and make sure that the services are tailored in a way that people are able to get those questions answered. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, Ash, for taking us through that. Matt Fung, did you want to come in at this point and add anything to what Ash has said, please?
Thank you, councillor mate. I think Ash has done a great job of summarising our current position, and also some of the challenges around vaccination. I think, you know, the language that we started to use more recently around Worcestershire is a met need reaching areas of a met need. So, that's where populations, for whatever reason, are not able to, or don't have the right directions to kind of obtain a particular vaccination, or, you know, preventative bit of medicine that will really benefit their health. So, that's something that we need to really keep in mind, because there are pockets of our population that aren't receiving vaccination, for instance, MMR particularly, at such high rates as perhaps the county as a whole. And we need to continue to kind of reflect on those populations and to facilitate them as best as we can to obtain a vaccination and to remove any barriers that may exist. And with that in mind, last year, we did run an MMR pop-up campaign, if some of you may remember, where we had around about 160 children vaccinated. That was in our local libraries, particularly in the north of the county and in Worcester City. And that's one of the plans that we have for this year as well, to repeat that kind of programme of work to enable people, if they so wish, to kind of get an MMR vaccination, because we believe that it's one of the best ways to prevent against, obviously measles particularly, but mumps and rubella as well. And it's really important to get those levels as high as possible, particularly in the pockets of communities that aren't perhaps as high as they could be. So, I'm really happy to take any questions on that, but I will hand to Will Taylor.
Thank you very much indeed, Matt. Will, please.
Thanks. I mean, I think this is a good news story. I mean, we are one of the best-performing councillors, I think, in the country in terms of our vaccination rates. However, as Matt said, there are things we could be doing better. So, I think there's something to hear about how the ICB commissions services. One of the factors, I think, really helps here is we have some of the highest satisfaction with our GP services in the country again. That satisfaction, that trust, will play into how we deliver vaccinations, because that's all about the relationship between the patient and their trusted healthcare giver. Of course, that's sort of part of the core of it, but the wider part of this is widening access, we're widening hours, widening the availability to do this, especially in some of our underserved communities. And as Matt said, we're looking at different ways of doing that. But at its heart, this is about the part of the 10-year plan of treatment to prevention. And that's about protecting yourself, protecting your neighbour, and also protecting our NHS services as going into winter. So, making sure our hospitals are there for people who need it, and also people have access to the GP appointments they need. But yeah, I think otherwise, you've summed it up beautifully.
Thank you very much indeed, Will. Dr McNally, did you want to come in at this stage?
Yeah. So, just to, I think, restate the ambition, really. We are doing well, relatively speaking. We're higher than, you know, the region, the country, and also our statistical neighbours, i.e. those areas that have similar socio-economic and demographic structures to us. So, but if we think of vaccination programmes like MMR, it still worries me that there are, for example, children out there unvaccinated against measles. I'm sure that we all would have saw the very sad case of the child that died in my home city, Liverpool, recently. And so, while we're doing well, relatively well, we need to keep pushing our ambition higher on this. And for me, I think we learnt a lot about vaccination during the pandemic, didn't we? We learnt a lot about how it's not just a medical phenomenon. And people don't always see those of us in the health or medical profession as the best advocates. So, I think what we need to continue to do is work with community groups as well. Sometimes voluntary sector groups, or in particular schools, are really well placed to advocate for vaccination. So, there's no resting on laurels here. We need to keep doing better.
Thank you very much indeed. I'll open the question up from the chair, if you don't mind. So, we speak about herd immunity, and I look at Bromsgrove, I just take that as the town, as I happen to lead that council. Our functioning economic geography looks to the north, and it looks to Birmingham predominantly for work. When you speak about herd immunity, how are you going to achieve that? And how can we improve and set ourselves tangible objectives to achieve that when people are moving from within the bounds of Worcestershire, and they're looking to the black country, Birmingham, to go to work? What messaging, what action, and how are we going to turn the curve on encouraging areas like Birmingham to go and get their vaccination, Ash and Will? Because, you know, I understand the ICB is going on to a larger footprint. What that doesn't need to do is dilute our actions within Worcestershire, but Coventry and Warwickshire, for example, have different demographic and different needs. If we're going out with messaging, what are we going to do to make sure that more people go and have their flu vaccination, their COVID vaccination in this coming autumn, when we're about four to six weeks from starting that immunisation programme? And I think as a board, we'd like to know the actions that are proposed, please.
So, that's a really, really interesting question, because we can protect ourselves in a way as Worcestershire, but as you say, we're surrounded by other areas. And also, you know, people go on holiday, and there is lots of measles cases in mainland Europe at the moment as well. So, there is a huge amount of work going on across the region. So, for example, every ICB has developed a winter plan, and part of that urgent and emergency care plan has a whole element around making sure that the preschool and school programmes are up to date, and then planning around flu and RSV. And we, as a region, have assessed those plans across national key lines of inquiry. So, there is a whole kind of process about making sure we go into winter with all areas having plans and assessing those plans.
Thanks for that, Ash. So, what will we see? What will the tangible difference between last year and this year be in terms of that immunisation programme? Because for many months and years, Dr McNally, when I had this, I was a CMR for Health and Wellbeing, used to say to me, we keep checking the health of the healthy. What we want to do is get those people who've never had a vaccination and aren't on any programme and aren't being checked. How do we get them to cross that threshold and go and get a vaccination, please?
Yeah, absolutely right, Chair. It's, sometimes with public health programmes, the last 5% is harder than the first 95% in terms of uptake. So, what we're doing is working with specific communities on a range of public health matters, including vaccination. Firstly, we're working with schools, and we work closely with the schools, particularly where we've got low uptake, and we work with the staff to get the right messaging out and also make it as easy as possible, for example, the children to uptake MMR. Also, there are communities such as the Gypsy Roma Traveller Community, which we are, we've got great links with. You'll know, when you were CMR, we did some work on suicide with that community. And we're also working with them on a range of public health issues, including vaccination and immunisation. I think that final few percent is going to be achieved not by mass media campaigns, not by general messaging, but by intensive work with communities and localities where uptake is lower. And as you know, we have a track record of working with voluntary and community sector groups to affect change. So, I think that's going to be the big difference going forward. We were doing it before, but it's time to step that up to get the last few percent in.
Thanks very much, Lisa. So, coming back to my question, how are we going to influence, Worcestershire's not an island, how are we going to influence the surrounding areas to get their immunisation rates up? Because, you know, Mrs Miggins going to work in Birmingham is as exposed as Mrs Miggins, not having had her vaccination, isn't she really? So, we need to get that education. Can I just come in at another point? Antinatal classes. If you want MMR uptake, surely you should be educating future mums about the benefits of immunisation when they're having their regular house checks. Leave that seed with you, because I'm going to bring other people in, but Will, please, thank you.
I mean, you mentioned ICBS. I think there's two things there. One is, obviously, we're looking at clustering ICBS to a wider footprint, but also we're going to get the delegated commissioning responsibility from the Midlands region. So, I think there's something there about how do we work beyond our borders and make sure we carry on working beyond our borders after delegation. What Ash has articulated is that the plans don't sit in isolation. They're assessed at the moment at Midlands level to make sure they all interlock and actually work. And I know for a fact, because I actually work as a GP in Birmingham, that we are looking very closely at our underserved populations. And Birmingham possibly has, you know, a bigger variation of underserved populations than Herford and Worcestershire does. And there are some very targeted pieces going on in those populations around talking to community leaders and actually trying to do exactly what Lisa's articulated in Herford and Worcestershire. So, I know that, because we're looking at that plan. What the ICB mergers and clustering has done has actually made us look as ICBS about how, when we've got these delegated commissions, we still work in that coordinated way and have some shared services and things like that. So, we are still coordinating plans, making sure they complement each other, because you're right, illness doesn't stop at borders just because we've drawn more on the map.
Thank you very much, Will. And I'd be interested in seeing the data, the data today and the data going forward around how you work that programme through. So, thank you. I've got councillor Wells, councillor Wild, and then I've got councillor Fordington, please.
Good morning, everyone. Ash, Matt, Will, thank you for coming, giving up your morning to come and talk today, and Lisa as well, of course. Forgive me if I sound direct here. We appear to be, appear to be saying, do you know, we're doing okay? Yeah? We're margin above the national average, so we're doing okay. Marginally above the West Midlands average, though actually, there is an exception to that, isn't there, in pregnant ladies taking up a flu vac, actually where we're worse than both the region and the national average. But I'm not going to pick, be get picky about this. The point I would wish to make is we're not The point I would wish to make is we're not comparing like with like, are we? More than hills is not Dudley. So I wonder whether it might be possible in future to create a suite of data that compares us with comparable councils and counties. I mean, I would suggest Warwickshire as an example, but there are many others in the UK. So I think there's a danger here, isn't there? And I think the word complacency has already been used. I can't remember if he said it, was it Will, I can't remember. So is it possible in future to get a database that compares, truly compares like with like? Because this gives me no real clarity as to how Worcestershire's doing. So that's my first point, so it's a direct question about a suite of indices that we use. The second point, and it's one for Lisa really. So with your public health hat on, you've already mentioned the need for cooperation, working collaboratively, trying to get at the hard-to-reach groups to encourage and improve immunisation in those areas. I'd be fascinated to know how you're actually going to do it and what targets you may set and then come back to us in a year's time and tell us whether you've achieved them or not. Because at the moment, it's not given me any real clarity about what we're hoping to achieve. So two specific questions. And then finally, I just wonder in terms of the immunisation programme, whether if people understood what measles looked and felt like, that would probably help improve the rate. It sounds something rather distant in the past, rather than anything that is on the table right now. So I wonder whether we can do more to be rather more stark and honest about what these illnesses actually create. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. I'm going to hand over to Dr McNally because she did indicate, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Wells. So I think first of all, I don't think I could have been clearer when I spoke that we're not being complacent. We, I did say that we are, we have a clear ambition to push the percentage up. So nobody's resting on any laurels here, I think I was clear about that. Secondly, it's a good point about statistical neighbours. As I said when I spoke earlier, on MMR, for example, we are significantly higher than statistical neighbours as well. Although I think it's a good point that we, I suppose we didn't want to drown with data, but we could have included that as an appendix. So we will do that in future. You know, sometimes public health people get told you've included too much data, in fact normally so. But I think it's a good point about statistical neighbours that councillor Wells makes. Because vaccination does have a linear relationship with, for example, socio-economic deprivation. In terms of what we're doing with the groups, I said, so I give one example of work, well, two examples I've already given. One, working with schools where uptake is low, we have a range of specific interventions and intensive work with those schools. Matt's already mentioned that where we have geographical areas with low uptake, we set up pop-up clinics. And again, we'll be doing that again this year. Other work I can talk about, we're working with prisons. Prisons are incredibly important places to get vaccination and other healthcare interventions right. Sometimes it can be a struggle, but we do have a lot of work going on with prison staff and we have a good partnership with them. And also we're working with the university to try and make sure. We have a lot of international students come over to Worcester and Worcestershire in general, but particularly Worcester, where maybe they come from countries where public health programmes are not necessarily as proactive as maybe they are in the UK. So we do a lot of dedicated work on catch-up to get people vaccinated there. So geographical areas, pop-ups, intensive work with schools with a low uptake, work with prisons, work with universities, work with Gypsy Roma Traveller groups. There's an awful lot of work going into this. And what we want to see is that percentage, for example, in MMR, to go from, you know, 95, 96, right up to very close to 100. There's no reason why Worcestershire shouldn't be the best in the UK and that's what we aim for. And I take your point about our neighbouring areas and vaccination is lower, we know, in, for example, Birmingham, which is one of the reasons we put pop-up clinics in areas that border Birmingham because there's some natural communities there. But I know that Ash and others across the Midlands are working really hard with public health teams who maybe have a particular challenge in their population.
Thanks very much indeed, Lisa. Councillor Wells, you wanted to come back?
Chair, thank you.
Oh, sorry, Matt wanted to, sorry, Matt, did you want to add to that? My apologies.
Just one point, which is, thank you for your comments and questions, councillor Wells. I just wanted to add that we also have Your Health, Your Wellbeing vans in Worcestershire that take vaccination and other healthcare directly into deprived neighbourhoods and communities as well. So they're offering those services directly to people who we're talking about. And that's one of the reasons why some of our vaccination mates have come up slightly, but there's more work to be done. And particularly that particular asset, we need to leverage more. So it's working with councillors and politicians as well to understand the needs of communities, which is where, you know, we look to our elected members as well to say, you know, we've got an issue over here. You know, we're seeing something that perhaps hasn't reflected in your data yet. Can we do something different? And one of our responses to that is the Your Health, Your Wellbeing van service that we can deploy.
Thanks, Matt, very much. Councillor Wells, you wanted to come back?
Chair, if I may, thank you for your responses. So it appears to me, Lisa, that public health and NHS are working collaboratively or maybe not independently, I don't know, this is the question, to try to increase the take-up of some of these vaccinations. I'm interested to know how that is actually practically happening on the ground because you both talked about going to hard-to-reach groups, prisons and so on. Are you coordinating, how is that working in practice is my first question. My second question is clearly you've identified the areas that you need to address. And you talk about, I don't know, mobile rocking up in the school car park and hoping that people will come along and have a chat about shingles or whatever. Is that proactive enough to actually drill down and get some outcomes, simply rocking up? Is that how you do it? Is it simply, is it as simple as that? And finally, my question is, how do you know when you've made progress?
So we certainly are working hand in hand with NHS England and the ICB. I suppose we have slightly different jobs in the NHS England will be more concerned with the bigger picture and making sure the vaccination information out there and the information that comes to us is accurate and properly promoted via mass media channels. But it's really our job in the local area to get into the knucks and crannies of the population in order to firstly understand and then address instances of low uptake. And in terms of how it actually works on the ground, well, that differs according to the setting. So for example, with schools where we may have lower uptake, we might do specific lesson plans. Or we might compose tailored communications with the help of the head teacher, who usually is the person along with his or her staff that understands the community best. We are also, it's still in the design stage, but we're also utilising data a lot more now. And we hope this winter to be able to have a look at where someone has particular vulnerabilities but has not taken up their vaccine yet and maybe doing some proactive work with individuals. So you can't get much more granular than that. We're doing everything we possibly can and we're constantly coming up with new ways of addressing this. We can send through to the panel examples of materials that we use with different settings to see what you think of them. Those materials are always co-designed with leaders in those settings. So for example, our work with Gypsy Roma Traveller community is not just done by us in a room. It's designed with the community and taking insight from those community leaders. So yeah, we are, and how will we know it's worked? Well, that's when it comes back to NHS England. NHS England will provide us with data on uptake and we need to see that moving closer to 100%. Those last few percent are always the most difficult. And of course, with a shifting population the whole time, progress isn't always linear. We have people coming into the area who, because they're not vaccinated, they reduce our uptake. So we have to, you know, work hard just to stand still, but that's not our ambition, we're going to work hard to keep moving up.
Thank you very much, you've got everybody's hands covered. Will, please, and then Matt, please.
I mean, I think we do do joint planning. I mean, that is key. We come at this from a different aspect, but we all want to achieve the same thing. At its heart, vaccination, especially at that last 5%, it's a hearts and minds thing, you know? And we need to understand who isn't being vaccinated, understand why and understand the trusted people that can talk to them. And that might come from health, it might come from schools. Certainly within the commissions and services, we look at it, it's a lot about how the recall is done, how the right information is given and how it's followed up, particularly, you know, around children who aren't born and that sort of thing. Because actually that then overlaps into other issues around safeguarding, that sort of thing. So we need to be key with that. But yeah, we are absolutely joining this up, absolutely doing it together and making sure that the systems work clearly. And strategically, it makes more sense because as the NHS now is moving towards this place where we are really thinking about treatment to prevention, but also understanding neighbourhoods, what natural neighbourhoods work and how we create neighbourhood teams, which is healthcare, social care, voluntary sector, schools within natural neighbourhood, all starting to work together in a much more seamless way to create integrated services, absolutely sits within the heart of the strategy of what the healthcare system is going to do within the 10-year plan with our partners.
Thank you very much indeed, Will. Matt, please.
Thank you. I was just reflecting on the range of partners that you suggested we work with. Absolutely, we work with a huge number, the usual suspects, the ICB, QTR, Community Trust, primary care, GPs, pharmacies, NHS England. The two that we haven't mentioned and we haven't really discussed, I don't think at HOS before, are our provider of school-age immunisations, Vaccination UK. So they go around to all of our schools, vaccinating on behalf of the NHS essentially. So we interface with Vax UK an awful lot, but they've never been to HOS, so they probably could talk for themselves, to be honest. And PPG, which is the provider of healthcare to our prison. That's a really important set of people within that organisation because they're essentially dealing with the healthcare of people who will at some point become part of our community again. And so we interface with them an awful lot around a lot of things, vaccination and more general healthcare and infectious disease issues as well. But it just struck me, just reflecting there, that actually we don't represent the whole system because there are large parts that aren't represented here that we can talk about, but you may wish to consider inviting separately.
Thanks very much indeed, Matt. Ash, please.
Thank you. Just to pick up on a couple of those points. So I think we do definitely have complementary roles between region and locality. So for example, in the region, we are able to see what all ICBs are doing so we can share best practice. So, you know, in Birmingham at the moment, there's an incident management team because of the recent cases of measles. They're doing some really interesting things, we learn about that and then we share it across the region. That's something that you couldn't do locally because you don't have those connections. So we will produce data, but only down to a certain level. And then the ICB or local authority will look at that in much more detail, going down to kind of local wards and local GP practices, for example. So, and we always talk to each other, you know, no one wants to duplicate, we need to be efficient. We want to make sure that we're doing things the most efficient way we can. It might be just good to mention the national vaccination strategy as well. So there is now a national vaccination strategy and there's some really interesting things there. So there's the concept of core supplementary and outreach. So we have a core service, say the GP service for some vaccinations. We then supplement it, say through community pharmacies, but in areas of highest need, we will then look to outreach, which is that kind of much more local, possibly even domiciliary service that we can do. And then I think I'll just mention a couple of national things that, you know, we as a region are supporting. So we're looking for a new school-age imm's point of care system. What this new system potentially is being piloted is Coventry, Warwickshire. But it could, for example, mean that there's a lot less work for school-age imm's teams to do around the administration of vaccinations, around the admin of vaccinations, which frees up time for them to do, have those clinical conversations with parents. So that's a national bit of work. There's a lot more work on the national data flows because part of outreach is about offering vaccinations anywhere. And to do that, you need access to the patient record, see if they've been vaccinated, you know, which has always been a stumbling point. So there's lots of work going on around that as well. So those are just a couple of examples. And the final thing I want to say is, I think you said, you know, if we do this, this will, this may work. This is really hard. So the people who haven't been vaccinated, have not attended their vaccination appointments, it's not at all easy to get them vaccinated. You're looking at, in the national catch-ups, you're looking at something like 15, 20%. So 80% will still not be vaccinated, you know, after your first conversation, second conversation. So it may be that you repeat a conversation or you leave it for a while and come back later. It's not that if only we did this, everyone else would get vaccinated. You know, we've got a group who've not vaccinated where it's very hard to get over 15, 20% and it's important to recognise that.
So my question, and thanks for that, Ash, has got to be, what can we do differently to attract that 80% that aren't getting vaccinated? Because our populations aren't co-terminalist in terms of health.
Yes.
You know, again, I take Bromsgrove, 77,700 population, according to the primary care network. There's 100,000, over 100,000. We're right on the edge of the conurbation, so parts of Hail, Huntington, Romesley, they look towards Hail's Own, for example, for their healthcare withal looks towards Reditch. We haven't got clear data showing the pure populations of our areas. And where we are on the edge of the conurbation, my fear is that we are not picking up those people. How do we track this and how do we influence your outcomes? Because I understand we're doing messaging, we're encouraging, but what do we do in terms of a master plan strategically to say, this is what, these are the actions we will take this winter, which is different from what we've taken in previous winters, to improve the immunisation? Because somehow we need to, whether it's a language bar or anything else, we need to break into those communities, to get those communities to come to the table and understand what their risks are if they don't have the immunisation. And I'm very conscious of the fact, and I know we've had the director of public health historically on the radio and the television, talking about immunisation in Birmingham. But as I do say, people work in Birmingham, they come home, we know we've been, and councillor, sorry, Dr McNally will know, I was very, very nervous when we had the first outbreak of measles because of our functioning economic geography with Bromsgrove, Reditch and Wood Forest. You know, fortunately, we've got high immunisation, but I want that for everybody. And as a society, I think we owe it to them. So again, what data are we going to see in the next six to 12 months? And how soon are you going to get the data that's an area of Birmingham that's, you know, 10% of the population that hasn't, has had immunisation and 90% hasn't? What can we do actively? Because we've got to be more proactive to get people to do it. Thank you.
Sorry, Chair, just to understand the question, are we talking about Worcestershire now or were you?
No, I was talking to Ash in terms of his West Midlands because he carries the responsibility and the weight of the West Midlands. We know that this, as councillor Wells has spoken about, are geographical neighbours. I understand the good work that's going on in Worcestershire, but as I keep saying, we're not an island, you know, people go down to GCHQ to work down south and they go up to Birmingham to go and get a job and they work in the QE hospital sector. We know we've got a high number of people working in the care sector, for example. How do we get those individuals to go and have their immunisations as required? Thank you.
Thank you. So in terms of, say, MMR uptake in other areas, so that is tracked, so there is that data. And just as in Hereford-Worcestershire, there's a vaccination programme board, there are vaccination programme boards in every ICB and their role is to track that data, to put on service that reflect the underlying needs. So there is a structure in every ICB to look at that and the local authorities are a key part of that because they understand their local population. And the local authorities are a key part of that because they understand their, their local population. I think that, sorry, there was a second part to your question.
Yeah, it's about how we, how.
How do you get to these people?
Yeah, how are you going to, how are you going to reach them?
So, so I think that's, so I would go back probably to the three Cs. So the confidence, complacency and access. So it's going to be a mixture of those. So confidence and complacency is around communications and engagement. It is difficult because almost you don't want to scare people. Because again, what our comms professional colleagues tell us is, people, people do not react well to being scared. So it's kind of saying to people, you know, if you get measles, you'll die of measles. You know, you've got to get it and make people feel guilty doesn't work. It's about the right level of urgency and, and having those ongoing communications. When we had a measles outbreak in Birmingham a few years ago, one of the most effective interventions was during the outbreak, we wrote to the parents of every child saying, do you know that your child is at risk of measles? There are lots of children today in ITU with measles. And that was very, very effective. But you have to be kind of sparing with that because people get overwhelmed and they feel a bit like they're being pressurised. Remember, vaccination is not mandatory. You know, it is a personal choice. And our role as clinicians is to give people the level of recommendation in proportion to the level of risk. And that is what we try and do.
Thank you, Ash. We'll probably come back to that later in the conversation. Councillor Wild and then councillor Fordington, please.
Thank you, Chair. It used to be back in the day that in the school playgrounds, you'd get a story about MMR. Nowadays, a story can go global in a few minutes. I think we are all aware of the Coldplay concert. What happened to a couple? The shock was the speed that that message went viral and the impact it had on the lives of those people around them. So the threat is there. Do you consider that a barrier to your messaging? Because if parents start to get alarmed, that message can now be, your message can be undone just like that.
Lisa, please.
I think councillor Wild raises a really important issue. I think we learnt a lot during Covid. As a Director of Public Health at the time, my main opponent, if you like, during the pandemic, felt sometimes like it wasn't the virus, but it was social media groups, sometimes media groups, but particularly people on social media, promoting scare stories about the adverse effects of vaccination. Those of us, I mean, I personally received threats because I was online trying to counter those messages. And we do face an everyday battle against people who will take advantage of people's fear to boost their own profile or just generate some attention for themselves. We have to, but I'm up for that battle. As I made clear during the pandemic and since, I'm up for that battle. I'll, I'll take them on because we have to, because we owe it to, for example, the parents of that child in Liverpool. You know, my message is always the same. If you take MMR, for example, my message is always the same that the vast majority of children, the vast majority of children in Worcestershire are vaccinated against MMR. But if your child isn't, there's a real risk there. It's a real risk. And, yeah, it, it is difficult, councillor Wild, to, to combat this. They have advantages over us. They're anonymous often. They can use threats, whereas we obviously keep things at a professional level. But we don't give up on it and we keep going because every child, for example, that is vaccinated, every person that has their flu jab this winter is a person less at risk of really serious illness. So that's enough motivation for me and all my colleagues to keep battling that.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Councillor Fordington, please.
This is a question to Ash. You sort of mentioned that you've got a catch-up plan. How are you going to be sort of bring that into scheduling? And what are you going to be targeting as in schools and things like that? How are you, I know that there was a plan for lesson plans and things like that. How are you going to reach those particular people which have actually missed? Thank you.
Thank you. So just in terms of the difference, so broadly, we've got delivery through GP practices, school age immunisation teams, and then kind of flu plans, flu delivery. So we, as a region, have developed improvement plans in, in those areas. So if I give you some examples. So for the school age improvement plan, what we'll do is we're going to review their consenting process and, and go through basically the whole process from when you are invited, how schools work with you, and understand how different teams across the region do that. Try and recognise what the best practice is and then share and encourage all of those providers to use the best processes. Because I think often it gets down to that nitty-gritty. You know, for example, do they, do you have a process where if a child wants to be vaccinated, but their, but their parents haven't done the consent form, can you sort something out on the day? Or do you leave it and that child never gets vaccinated? There's those kinds of processes which are really, really important. So in the school age IMs plan, we've got that. We've got this new point of care system that I've mentioned. In, in the kind of naught to five, which is the GP plan, we have a toolkit of GP practices that tells our best practice, tells them about how to code things properly so that we are targeting the right children. And also, we have got, so within the GP contract, there is the provision every year for one catch-up programme. So previously, we've had PTTSS catch-up, we've had MMR catch-up. So that, that's probably the most kind of obvious route that we have that catch-up programme. Otherwise, we encourage practices to, to do those catch-ups. But generally, they, they are mandated to do the preliminary offer and, you know, follow up for two, two more attendances where people fail to attend. But we encourage all practices to offer vaccines opportunistically, which is, you know, when they're offered alongside, when the patient attends for something else. And also to try and catch up those patients as well. But we have got those national catch-ups which are, which have been implemented. And the last national catch-up was for MMR was actually really effective. It was very interesting because for the first time, we had the data to track the quality of the catch-up programme, which we hadn't had previously. And what we saw was not only did, again, as I said, I think it was around 15, 20% of people had the vaccine, but interestingly, they were actually more deprived and from, from non-white British ethnic groups than the other way around. So we actually saw some reduction in inequalities as well. And it was really good to kind of document that.
Thank you very much, Ash. Councillor Bakker, Kuma, please.
Thank you, everyone. I'm always fascinated when the preventative medicine comes in on board here because I'm a great champion and a believer in that. I think some of the things which you have said makes a lot of sense. It is difficult to catch a lot of things. I'm not going to repeat everything. I've got a couple of things for you, Matthew, about, you talked about the bus, your health bus. That's quite essential that all the councils need to know when they are coming in their areas, if that can be publicised further. Then along in, when that, I mean, I know about that health bus when it comes, it only does something. For example, it will just check your blood pressure. And they say, we can only do one for an hour. So that is not cost-effective, not time-efficient wise. So if you say you're coming for vaccination, so that bus should have a repainted on that day, vaccination alone kind of stuff. It just goes along in vulnerable areas with the catchment, where the, you know, uptake is low. So perhaps that is one way of looking at it. It's a good old days, people used to go around that way. And that might increase your uptake, not only education, but the uptake. That is something which I think I would like you to promote. But to do that, as you quite rightly said, the councils need to play a role. A lot of people are not, maybe, you know, there are a lot of people who are digitally excluded. I keep using that word. But I think we need to target that group, single parents, et cetera, et cetera, who are not there. So maybe even flyers in some places to say, we are coming to your area. So that is something far more important. Good old fashioned way of catching, okay, and we're talking about 5%, but it is, I'm not going to repeat, the fluctuating population means there are more who are going to come in now. So the more we advertise it, you know, in a hybrid way, perhaps we'll catch more people and that way we'll prevent. That is something about the health bus we talked about. The second one I've got is about Covid vaccine. Now, the initial vaccine uptake was good. It started to taper off for various reasons, i.e. the government decided not necessary to give. And then people fell out of love with it. Then people had problems with Covid-induced various illnesses. Then Covid-induced social media problems, so we heard about that. So what is the role of public health in, A, showing that Covid vaccines are important for vulnerable group? And how do you promote it rather than say, it's okay if you want to take it or not? It is coming to people's door, but how can we emphasise that that is still essential to have Covid vaccine? Thank you.
I'll take the first question. Thank you, councillor Kuma. So your health, as you've mentioned, they, they provide a wide range of different services, vaccinations and health checks and blood pressures and point of care testing, lots of different things. Actually moving into some testing for STIs now as well. So really quite a wide-ranging service. They use different ways of promoting, you know, when, when they're going to different areas. They have an online calendar for professional organisations to access and to request as well on, on the internet for, for them to come to, to certain areas. There's always room for improvement in terms of how we communicate. I'll certainly feed it back to the team. There have been, you know, very intentional programmes of work where they have leaf-litted areas. Obviously, that's quite intensive in terms of the time that takes. But certainly when there's a real need in a particular area, they will go around and leaflet. They use social media. I take your point about digital exclusion, which is why they need to retain, you know, a breadth of different ways to interact with the local population. But I agree, you know, thank you for, for recognising that it's an important service. And I will feed back your comments.
Thank you very much indeed. Will, did you want to come in next, please?
I just wanted to add in a little bit about the your health. I mean, obviously, we work this jointly, again, with public health. I think the other thing about that is that a vaccination event shouldn't be an, an event in isolation. So I, I think it's really important that we offer value. So when people come to have their vaccination, we are also talking about what's happening with your blood pressure? All you need to put in for that health check. Checking that parents are coping and doing okay and, and have that wider thing. So, yes, we can target vaccinations in there, but vaccination is an opportunity to talk about other things. And I, I don't want to lose that in that. I think that's really, really important. I think the other thing about the your health person is because it's mobile, it can go to places which do send target those populations we aren't seeing so much. I know during Covid, we were looking at mobile clinics happening in mosques. And there was a reason that because it felt like that was then giving that trust and that validation. And it gives that opportunity to think about outside the box about sight, but also that wider offer.
Yes, thank you very much, Will. Councillor Kuma.
I think taking your health bus point of view, I heard, I was there, it will take nearly 45 minutes to an hour with one patient. So that is not cost-effective. And people don't hang around for an hour to say, my turn is coming. So I think there should be some way of targeting. I mean, if you're just checking blood pressure or something like that, it will take time, which we all know, taking our clothes off and whatever, whatever. But if you target specifically vaccine, which is what you are here for, that will mean there'll be far more input and far more uptake on that. So if you jumble up everything together, you're giving a mixed messages and so the uptake will be very low. Sorry.
Thank you so much. Will, did you want to come back?
We'll, we'll feed that back. I think it's valid point. Some of this isn't actually doing, it's just making the intervention of saying, I noticed your need. And then signposting it in the future.
Thank you very much indeed. Matt, please.
So one final comment for me, and it's a plug for the Your Health Service. On the 4th of August, they're going to be on ITV News. So if you want to tune in sometime on the 4th of August, you'll see your health being interviewed and the reporters following them around to see exactly what they do broadcast. So it just highlights some of the great work that we're doing locally.
That's great. Thank you very much indeed. Ash, did you want to come in?
Thank you, yeah. I was just going to talk about the Covid, Covid point. So I think the difficulty with Covid is that you could observe it as, you know, the groups are always changing. I have the vaccine, but I seem to get Covid anyway. So people are, are struggling a bit with, with the Covid vaccine program. So I think it's something about how we communicate to people and, and help them explain, help explain the situation to them. So the situation is that as a population, we have a very well-protected, broad-based protection. And that's because of previous vaccinations and people having Covid themselves, often more than once. So the vaccination programme has become smaller and smaller and more targeted. So now we are just targeting those who are at very high risk of complications of Covid. And I think sometimes those individuals feel a bit like no one else is having the Covid vaccine, maybe it's not so important. So it's just that the messaging is quite different in Covid than it is saying MMR or, or childhood vaccinations. And we just need to kind of keep moving with, with that messaging. And I think it is important that, you know, Covid is mainly there to stop you getting severe Covid from being hospitalized or dying from Covid. It is quite normal to have the vaccine and still get Covid. MMR is completely different. If you have two doses of MMR, you're effectively 99% protected against even getting measles, let alone the complications of measles. So, you know, all vaccines are different and we just probably need to learn about how we communicate that.
Thank you very much indeed. Are there any further questions? Councillor Fry, please.
Thank you very much for coming. It's great to see you all here. It's good to hear the news. It's good to hear that Worcestershire is above the national average. That's, that, that's positive news. Obviously, we all know that within Worcestershire, there are very different districts. And some of the areas that I represent, one is really completely affluent. You, you have to be on a lot of money to actually live there. The not far away is, 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 is a very working-class, deprived area of, of the town. To say that Worcestershire is, is, is like, you know, above there. What I would like to see are what, where, what the differences are within the local districts of, of certainly Redditch, because I'm a Redditch Borough councillor at the moment, sadly. Not, not a Worcestershire one. But, but, but sort of, I would like to sort of like see the numbers for Redditch. But not only that, I would like to see whether this district is, is, is lower than that. But in the lower one, where there isn't the uptake, that may be for a number of reasons. It may be because they didn't understand the messages that we were coming out. They don't have the enthusiasm for that. They are more suspicious of that. Again, as Dr McNally said, social media is a nightmare. And, and basically, you know, if, if vaccinations give you autism and all that, sort of, you're gonna, there are, there are people that are going to believe it and be against having vaccinations. But what I want to do is to see what we're doing about it. And certainly through this committee, because as the Chair said, we don't come here just to talk about vaccinations. We want to see what's the impact of having a discussion about this? What can we do? What knowledge do you pass on to the councillors from the districts? And so the councillors can go back and say, well, look, we've got a social club, let's have a vaccination hub and things like that. In a, in, in a districts, we want to have an impact. And so what can be provided to us and to the, the people to make sure that we have an impact? Where are the numbers for the local districts? Because that's what I would like to see. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Fry. Who would like to pick that up, please? More granular details?
I can start us off, yeah. So unfortunately, that is actually quite difficult because of the national systems for collecting vaccination data. They are getting better. So we are, we've got something called FDP Federated Data Platform, which was first introduced for Covid. Covid, we've got excellent data. Right from the beginning, we've got, you know, almost kind of street-level data. And that FDP is now being rolled out to MMR. So we will hopefully soon have much better MMR data. We might have ward-level data and district data. But the national surveillance systems tend to go down to low. data. But the national surveillance systems tend to go down to local authority, and sometimes only to ICB. So it's very difficult. But we do have, for example, for MMR, we have got some proxies, so we can measure uptake by GP practices, and that's published. So we, and that's publicly available, published data, so we can, you know, look at that data. Of course, where you're registered to isn't necessarily where you live. There are those kind of complications. So I think it may be on the way because of FDP, and that we should hopefully get much closer level data. So in Birmingham, where there's a kind of enhanced measles response at the moment, they have done an analysis by ward, for example, for measles and by school as well. So there are things that can be done. But I think, I think our data systems are kind of just catching up really, because they are not built for very local granular data at the moment, unfortunately.
Well, I think if we're gonna have an impact, we need to, because we need to get into the communities that really are vulnerable. And often, if communities have their first vaccination, they will, they will come back and have a say. I am an example. I never had the flu, my wife did, I never had the flu vaccination. But because I needed the Covid one, which is where I work, because I had that, I said, oh yeah. It's not that I was scared of it, I just, I've got a good immune system, so why mess with it? But because I had the flu, so because I had the Covid vaccination, I said to my wife, sort of, book me one as well. And so now we both have the flu vaccinations. If it gets into the habit of people having vaccinations, I think it's worth, but it's just starting out. There are many people from different countries that are coming to certainly Redditch, and have we, have we got the message in their language? Basically, do they understand what we are trying to tell them? There's a lot of work to do, but it needs to get down to, sort of, so we're spending our time in the areas where we need to. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Fry. Councillor Turner, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Possibly questions for Lisa and Ash. With, if you're apprehensive about vaccinations, no amount of adverts, leaflets through your letterbox will change people's mind to take up that vaccine. So obviously, just trying to get that message through to those various communities. And that we know that there are certain religious groups that are very apprehensive about injections and various other things. So how can you reach those religious groups? Particularly, radio programmes that broadcast to those particular community groups would be a good way of transmitting that particular message. And particularly to Ash, when he said that you've got to be careful that you don't frighten people. And I know, I can remember when I was at school, when there was drug or alcohol abuse, and that resonated very firmly with me when I was, you know, in my sort of mid-teens. And that's lasted through to my adulthood. And obviously, pupils of today will become adults and parents of tomorrow. So that, I know, probably a very much a long-term plan, but I think that would be important. Okay, we may be falling short, but educating people at a young age, they'll ultimately transport that message through to their, ultimately their own children. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Ash, did you want to start with that, please?
Yeah, I'll just, yeah. So just a bit about scare. I think it's not about necessarily scaring people, it's about, what we know is that if you don't want a vaccine and you feel very kind of hassled and pressurised to have it, and the facts that you're given, you feel aren't honest, then actually that messaging doesn't work. So it's actually about being transparent and honest, and also, you know, people, and people have to be ready for that message as well. And sometimes, as I said, you know, I think in the time of the Birmingham outbreak, a quite hard-hitting message did work, and we did perhaps scare people. And I don't think there's anything wrong with telling people the situation and telling them how to protect themselves, and that's really important. But, you know, we just need to be kind of clear on that and be available for people to go away, think things through and come back to us. I suppose for me, those are the key points.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Fordington, please.
Can I just add to that, please, Ash? How we had for Covid, we actually had a card system, didn't we, where you had to, you know, you had a tick, something like, a signature? Can we not have something like that in place for these MMR vaccinations?
Yeah, I think the trouble with anything else held is people lose things. So that's...
It could be through, yes, digital.
Yeah. So we are working towards that. So that is, that is the kind of goal, that, I mean, so already, a lot of people will be able to get their MMR status through the NHS app, depending on how your GP is connected to the NHS app. But, you know, there is, the long-term goal is that everyone will have access to their vaccination records digitally held, you know, on their phone. That's what nationally they're working towards, certainly.
Councillor Fordington?
Can I just add to that as well? If they haven't taken the vaccinations, can they not be alarmed as a sort of text message or something like that? Could that be possible to put that into the system?
So that's what happens in the national catch-up campaigns. So they will get NHS app invites. So there is no, so it tends to be linked to national campaigns. So, you know, if we are having a few months on measles, then the, those invites are digital first, they work through SMS and through NHS apps. So NHS app is, it does alert you in doing those campaigns.
Thank you very much indeed. Any further question? Councillor Wild?
Just one more. I'm very aware that there are a lot of practitioners in the complementary medicine area that are very anti-vaccine, and they promote it very strongly, and they're very convincing. How do you deal with that?
I think it's very similar to the social media question, isn't it? There are a lot, there are people out there that do promote their views in a very convincing way. I think there is something here for all of us to all have a single unified message that is evidence-based and is the single version of the truth, and just keep promoting that through as many different avenues as we can, and through areas, as Lisa said and other people have said, that people trust. So we are giving the right information to the right people to make informed decisions.
Thank you very much. Councill, sorry, Dr McNally, please.
Thank you, Chair. One thing I'd add about, not all, but a lot of those who put a lot of effort into telling people that vaccines are dangerous, what you'll find is they usually have an alternative to sell. So I've seen during Covid and since, companies that will tell you about all the horrors of a vaccine, and then sell you a ultra-high vitamin drink or some other supplement. Maybe people will tell you that the MMR vaccine is dangerous, but coincidentally, they can offer you a single jab at great cost. So I would always say, a lot of this is about following the money. Some people just enjoy staring the pot and getting people like me abused on social media. Others are making a lot of money out of it. And if you look at one of the most famous anti-vaxers, I won't mention the name, is now a very rich man, after being struck off. So follow the money, and, you know, then you'll see where people's motivations often lie.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Councillor Fordington, you have the last question.
Can I just add something else to social media? Why can it not be advertised more? That you are actually sort of putting, you know, whatever you're putting out as a message across, whenever you are actually opening up social media, they can actually see that the next MMR is actually available. So I think that advertising needs to be a bit more, you know, sort of fluent in so many ways. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think you take that point, don't you? It's when you're sat on a bus or you're on a train and you look out, yeah, it's that opportunity, isn't it? Thank you very much for coming along this morning. I'd like to invite you back in twelve months. And Ash, if we could have some comparable data around our similar councils, county councils, and the West Midlands, where we sit within the West Midlands, and also the objectives that have been achieved in this coming twelve months, please. We'd be really grateful, because I know we're pushing on the five per cent, but we need to take the people behind us that haven't reached the levels we have, eighty per cent in some areas, as you've so clearly stated. Thank you very much for your attendance. Thank you for your contributions. We really appreciate it. Thank you. The next agenda item is the work programme. I didn't call you in at that, because I did look to see, and I didn't get your hand up, Simon and Victoria. I didn't know if you wanted to add to that conversation or not, to be perfectly honest. I took it that you didn't. Was I correct?
I'd have been interested to talk to them about the take-up of the flu and Covid vaccination, and particularly the Covid vaccination within the NHS last year, because in previous years, we've seen a lot of publicity about the numbers, the take-up. I understand that there's a fair degree of, I don't know, hesitancy might be the word that would be used, because the take-up was quite low, I understand, particularly for Covid, and whether or not that presents an opportunity to do some research around why people, with a captive audience, if you like, a controllable audience, as to why people might not take the vaccine.
Thank you, Simon. Can we just drop them an email and ask them that question, please, and we'll get that answer back to the whole board? Thank you. I think it's a good point. I did look to get, catch your eye and go and...
Can I also just add as well? I mean, in terms of local data, and councillor Fry raised the issue about local data, I sit on a shared care record programme board, and conscious of the information that is available to our health system now. On my app, it shows that, I won't say how many years ago, on my NHS app, it shows I had the pneumonia vaccine, for example. So I think if you went to our GPs and say, in Upton-on-Seven, how many of your patients have had, actually had this vaccination, they'd be able to tell you. So I do wonder whether the questions, when we get the response that we can't actually find that information, you wonder whether the questions are actually being asked, and we're making use of the data sets that exist.
Yeah, it's great, but not all our GP surgeries are co-terminus with our districts.
I do realise there are, you know, I would talk about Cleve Prior, for example, where patients who live in Cleve Prior will actually go across the border into Gloucestershire or Warwickshire to use a service. So I'm aware of that. But certainly for eighty per cent of the patients, and if we were looking, for example, in Gorsil and Warden, or we were looking at Redditch in Woodrow, for example, those areas that, I'm not sure how we refer to our areas now, we used to call them areas of highest need, health hotspots, sorry, no, so, but health hotspots, I meant the actual, the actual areas where we know health inequalities exist, right, and stick out like a sore, pretty much like a sore thumb when you look at the data when you see it. I believe that is all available, because I know Matt's done a lot of work around local, local super output areas. So we ought to be able to see where we can target those messages and the activity as well.
Yes, thank you. I think if we can have a deeper dive or ask the questions when we have a subject matter we're going to discuss, it would probably be a good idea to ask, can we have a set of the data that we have as a county council via Public Health? Because that's a good steer then for us to be able to challenge any other data that comes across. It's a good point. Thank you.
I'd just conclude by saying immunisations isn't, hasn't been something that Health Watch has actually ever had been asked to or seen the need to actually look into, because I think the uptake in Worcestershire, as you've heard, is actually very good.
Yeah, it is. I think that conversation, Simon, was about how we take others with us, and the fact that we need our neighbouring authorities to be doing the same. Councillor Wells, please.
Chairman, thank you. I thought it was a really useful hour and a half, without bounds. I thought we were beginning to get to another of the issue. I was fascinated with the interrelationship between Lisa and her colleagues there. For the first time, in my experience, Lisa was actually being asked questions rather than asking questions, which we spoke about in the pre-meet, about holding people to account. I just wonder, Chair, if we could go the extra mile on this occasion. So you've already suggested to them that they come back in twelve months with this and this and this. Might it be even more important to reinforce that with a note from you as Chair, saying, thanking them for their attendance and really putting it down, one, two, three, four? And the point I would have made if we'd had time, but I think we were circumventing it anyway, is, sorry, it's gone straight out of my head. It'll come back at some point, it's obviously that important. But if perhaps a letter to you, from a note from you on behalf of the board, thanking them, but also making the point about Worcestershire figures compared with like, like for like, rather than the West Midlands, and, yeah, that was the point. There was a lot of talk about engagement with hard-to-reach groups. And we tested what that would look like, and the vice-chair kind of particularly tested about forty-five minutes with a single person queuing up in a car park somewhere, waiting for their blood pressure test. So I don't know whether they are committed to doing anything differently. Yeah, this is the point. So this is what they do, and this is the outcome. The outcome is, you know, it's not great, we know we're near the ninety-five per cent herd immunity figure. If we carry on doing the same things, the definition of insanity is, you expect something different. So if we are going to raise those figures higher to get to the sort of benchmark we're looking for, what are you going to do differently to get there? Because if you carry on doing the same thing, you're not going to get there. I don't know whether we could encapsulate that sort of thing in terms of what we would kind of respectfully say to them. I just think that's a tangible outcome that we can achieve beyond just saying thank you very much for coming today.
Absolutely. The thought had crossed my mind about sending a letter, actually. Great minds. So, yeah, that's an action I'll take away and write and ask about what the follow-up is, and to invite them back and to thank them most sincerely, because we are grateful they could be doing other things in their professions. Thank you. I've got councillor Turner, then councillor Fry, sorry.
Yeah, from all the statistics that we're basing on, all the uptake of these various vaccinations, it all seems to be looking inward, comparing ourselves with other shires around the country and so on. What about comparing ourselves with international figures, rather than just within the UK itself? I think that would be important, because we're obviously striving for excellence, and we should be looking at further afield in order to learn from others and hopefully improve our own systems as a consequence.
I think it's a good point, councillor Turner. We've historically looked at the UK and different parts of the UK, and we could look outside, to compare us with the rest of the, you know, the world and where we do sit. They will have that World Health Organisation data, and it will be out there. Okay, we'll take that as a point too. Thank you. Councillor Fry?
Thank you. Looking where Worcestershire is compared to our neighbours, and indeed internationally, I'm not too much bothered about that. Certainly, I would, I would be fascinated to see it. But I would like to bring Abidale and Lakeside and Batchley and Woodrow up to the Worcestershire average, and I would like to say, how do we do that? Because that'd be important to me. The poorer areas, also, the communities that are struggling to actually take it. So like, like the Islamic community in many areas, the working-class Islamic communities, that I'm married to a woman who comes, whose family, even though she's born in Bromsgrove, like, come from Jamaica. A lot of the Jamaican community have got no interest in vaccinations. Many have, the majority have probably. But I don't know those figures, and I'd like to know those figures, because there are many people of that community that I care about deeply, that I'd like them to be safe.
You should have a local strategic partnership, and as part of that, you get up-to-date data, a member of that, as to where you're getting hip fractures occur, health disparities. At Bromsgrove, I have an indep- At Bromsgrove, I have an indeps report every six weeks when we meet and I sit on that partnership board and go through it. So we took some action around strength and balancing classes because we had some hip issues and strength and balancing in Blackwell. So we actively tried to change the dial on that and it's been very progressive, I think the word is. So I would go back to your local strategic partnership and ask for your localised data. If you have any issue with that, councillor Fry, come and see me because it is available and it is important. I know that Malvern, they have a local strategic partnership. You all have them, but it's getting the granular detail so you can... I think you might find if you talk to councillor McVay, she might be able to help you on that one. All right. But it is a good point and I'll come to councillor Qumal.
Councillor Fry, I think I'll take your point there. If you look at Worcestershire, including Redditch, a large majority are Caucasians, okay? The percentage of non-whites are low as compared to, say, Birmingham. So what we have to do is to learn, got to go back to public health, to say comparative data of exactly what we have in Redditch, vulnerable groups. How are they being targeted and how are they being educated in Birmingham? Take that as an example and put it towards Redditch, quite rightly for the disparity. Coming back to ethnic minorities, there are always going to be issues about uptake, beliefs, et cetera, et cetera. Again, religious faith leaders have to be included again. Lisa is very good in that, to take that on board, to take the faith leaders and say how to change the beliefs and attitudes. That's a completely different ballgame. So they have to come in on the board to change the beliefs so that the uptake is nearly the same as a Caucasian. So those are the things to take into consideration. So yes, it's a big challenge because the percentage of non-whites are low in Worcestershire area, the priority probably is not there, but we have to bring that into focus. You're right.
Thank you very much. So if I can just bring us back to the work programme now, please. So going forward, have you all looked at it? Are there any matters that you'd like to raise to the top of the pile? Are there others that you think to yourself, well, we could look at that later in our time schedule?
Well, we have the word possible future items. Almost all of them, I feel, it would be beneficial to have them. But certainly to keep an eye on the access to GP. I'd like regular updates on that because there was a real problem with that last year.
Absolutely. So updates.
Dermatology, people are still going to Hereford, myself included. And that's a big challenge to a lot of people who can't drive or catch a train there. I believe the service is working very well, but you know, it'd be good if we could have some feedback on that and hope that it can come back in-house.
So I suppose that the objective is what can we influence to get the best outcomes, isn't it here? Okay, so with dermatology, historically, we know that we had a shortage of consultants in that area and it was reviewed at the back end of 2024. I'm thinking about, we haven't had an update on stroke services. Where is it going? What actions are we taking since 2022? That's three years. It's quite a timeframe. Our colleagues in Health Watch probably have some up-to-date data we could use in that. So I would like to see that come through personally. Are others in agreement?
I am.
Yeah, great. So stroke services, we've... Cancer pathways, we've done in 2022 and 2024. I'm trying to go back to where we've got maternity and newborn services we did in 2018, 2021 and 2023, following maternity services following the CQC inspection in September 21. So are they due for a CQC inspection shortly, maternity services, would you say, Sam?
We'd have to check.
Okay. I think, I don't know, what would the rest of you like to be? I want you interested in these subject matters. Tom Well, councillor Wells.
Chairman, I'd like to make a case for Parkinson's. We all deal with circumstances that present themselves to us as individuals. And the horror story of Parkinson's is something that I think we should investigate and certainly have it on our long list. And the worry is we'll get a slick presentation and everything will be seeming to be rosy in the world and we'll carry on and forget all about it. I do think that in our quest to try to make a difference, we need to find a mechanism in our meetings for triangulating what we hear. So we hear from the top-ranking professionals about the overall targets being met and we all go away fairly satisfied. But what we don't do very well is get it from the other end of the story. And I've become quite involved in Parkinson's locally recently and the horror stories are incredible. It takes over a year to get a reference from a GP to a neurologist, over a year. That's outrageous.
So can I just interject at this point? So say, are we looking at all neurological conditions? Because multiple sclerosis, which is quite close to my heart, is another challenge. Motor neurone disease is another one, Parkinson's. So we've got neurology on here that was suggested in May 23. I don't think we've done anything, had any investigation in that. So I absolutely concur with what you've said. Let's look at neurological conditions, the diagnosis, the wraparound care and the enablement within the communities. Because sadly, these aren't illnesses that go away. They are progressive illnesses. So how do we... Do you want to put your mic on, councillor Fry?
We'll be questioning the 8th of September's thing about workforce pressures. Because earlier on, I think people questioned whether that was as relevant or not.
Yes, you're absolutely right, councillor Fry. So the suggestion's been made that we put it on the programme of works and every single topic we discuss is, so if we're discussing neurology, we'd have a conversation about, okay, so what are we doing around the workforce, capacity, enablement? So we link that on to every subject matter rather than discussing a very strategic, how's the workforce? We know we've got challenges within the workforce, but when we're talking about a particular topic, which is often one of the issues that councillor Wells has just spoken about with Parkinson's, how do you see your Parkinson's nurse or your multiple sclerosis nurse? How often, how many people are out there in Worcestershire actually addressing the needs of our population with these very, very difficult, challenging conditions? So I think we're moving that. We've got also down on the 8th of September, update on the progress of Herefordshire and Worcestershire's Health and Care NHS Quality Commission well-led inspection. Is that good to go? Because the review was requested in January. We're past the six-months mark. Health Watch, is this something that you've done any work on?
Sorry, Chair, can you just repeat which organisation you were talking about?
The update and progress of Herefordshire and Worcestershire Health and Care NHS Trust Care Quality Commission well-led inspection.
Yeah, we've been very involved in their recovery plan. In fact, they now invite us to their Quality and Safety Committee where they actually discuss that.
So would we be, would you be, is this a topic we could discuss? Is this, ladies, is this doable?
We would recommend through agenda planning, speaking with health colleagues and just checking in terms of the content. But yes, if that's an item you want in September, we can look to arrange it.
Thank you very much indeed. So we've got, let's put some topics on the table that the team can go away and talk to health colleagues about, so when the papers can come forward and let's move it forward. Simon, did you want to come back?
I did, if I might, if you might indulge me, Chair. I would absolutely endorse you looking at functional neurological decline, Parkinson's and that sort of thing. Two years ago, we were approached about doing some piece of work about that. But I think, to be honest with you, it was bigger than we could actually manage and finding a way in is quite difficult. But I did understand at that time, I think there was one nurse seeing 700 patients in the county, which I think is something that perhaps councillor Wells is talking about. So it is an area to be looked at and there is a story reported by the BBC today around a patient in Worcestershire, which revolves absolutely around access to neurological services.
Yes, thank you very much indeed. So we very much want to discuss and to look into that matter, neurology. I've got councillor Ward and then I've got councillor Backle and councillor Wild. And councillor Harrison, I'll come to you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. On that point, I think encompassing all those things into one agenda item, neurology, is not probably going to work in terms of the scope of the issues around Alzheimer's, Parkinson's. They're big topic areas which I think might need more than one meeting or one agenda item because they are individually quite significant resource-intensive and significant topics.
So what I would suggest is we do an overview meeting and then we look and see if there's any task and finish groups we need to look at separately. Would that be a starting point? Everybody in agreement with that?
I'd be, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Councillor Qumal, please.
Madam Chair, I sound like a broken record here. I have got a few things here which are quite relevant from people's point of view. I don't know what the members think and you think about it. The topics such as GP access and appointment systems, nobody talks about it because that is a major issue. Same-day access, digital versus in-person balance, patient satisfaction on that. Then I've got...
It's on the list. Here it is.
Okay. Emergency care pressures, we talk about it once a year, but that comes in like it came in December when they had prepared a plan in October. And unfortunately, the disaster came a bit month earlier and they couldn't use it in the next month. So something to think about. And then the other things are out-of-hours and urgent care. People say, don't come to the acute emergency places, but out-of-hour surgeries are terrible and urgent care services are terrible. We tried to find ways, out of finding out-of-hours, we don't have any. Then we have issues regarding delayed discharge and hospital flow. We had people who talk about, it's the pressure from the social care. Yet when you talk to the social care people, they say, nothing to do with us, it's the hospital's problem. So who's right? So we had social services coming. We heard them. They said, it's nothing to do with us. It's the hospitals who stopped them going. So I've got loads of topics, but I will shut up there.
No, no, I don't want you to shut up. But we've got much of what you've just said on the work programme. What we're looking at doing is prioritising the work programme so that we can move these and decide what the order is to bring them forward. Because these items have been brought that you've just suggested in March 25 and access to GPs was September 24. So maybe we need to bring that access to GPs item up the pile and look at that. And then we'll work through the rest and put them on the list. Okay. So thank you very much, Backle. Who was next, please? Mr Adams, Simon Adams from Health Watch, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, could I just make a suggestion? Because we brought along to, I've given to Joe before the meeting, some copies of our... We're just writing our business plan for our new contract. And for example, one of the things that we've noted, we've picked up on is the publicity that was given to the GP survey by the ICB in relation to Worcestershire. And statistically, what looks like very much improved access and very good access in Worcestershire. So one of the projects that we've got down to do very, very soon is to actually talk to GPs through their patient participation groups, right? About how they see the access at their public participation groups and how they've actually achieved those improvements because they've given quite a lot of money to GP practices, particularly to improve access. So you might be able to use that information, I was thinking. Because what we can't, what we don't have the ability to do is actually sit any of the NHS leaders down in front of us and quiz them like you do to get under the skin of it, right? So I don't know whether you want to, and some of the issues that you've been talking about are in our plan. For stroke, for example, they are currently looking, starting to look at the rehabilitation pathway. Now, in Worcestershire, we have probably, you know, in the community hospitals, a very good rehabilitation pathway. Our concern is to make sure that we try and keep that. But with all the emphasis on care at home, then one could foresee that they may wish to make some changes there. Now, we've got some representation in that group, but again, I think that is absolutely spot-on for your group chair to be looking and saying, we need an update on this because we're getting beyond the urgent treatment pathway part of the process into the rehab.
Thank you very much. I think this would be really good because we could use this as a tracker for the work you're doing to feed into our work programme. So...
I'll just leave that idea with you anyway.
Yeah, I think it'd be very good if you've got on-the-ground data, et cetera. You know, it helps us in our discussions and the questions we're asking. So have we any other, back to the table, items, subject matters that you want to bring forward that you think should come up the pile? Whose hand did I see? Was it councillor Wild and then councillor Harrison?
To answer that question, I did mention earlier in the pre-meet about the whole administrative side of things, which, not medical, but it does impact on people because it's not always right. You can get letters six months after the appointment should have been. There's all sorts of confusion around it. And I'd like to know how they're handling it and how they're going to improve it. But the other issue I was going to raise, because it was something that Tom said, and it's the power of the lived experience. And this seems to be a forum where the big bosses come and they tell us the data and the statistics and everything. But what they don't get, unless we've got something to tell them, is what people are actually experiencing and how do we drive that forward? How do we get that? I think Backle mentioned it about, we're representing our communities and we're hearing these stories all the time. I'm in my third day and still dashing to something this afternoon, dealing with a complete breakdown of a family because of Parkinson's. And it's an absolute nightmare and you want that voice to be heard. And it's, can we do it in a way that we can let that voice be heard and that story?
Yeah, we can. I'll come to you first, councillor Wells.
Chairman, most of us, I think overnight, received an email. And the email was a plea for help with clearly complex issues at play, including mental health issues. And I've just forwarded it to Lisa McNally in the hope that she might be able to signpost this person who's absolutely desperate and not knowing what else to do. So I'm wondering whether out of the meeting, Chair, you might have a discussion with Simon? Because in terms of Health Watch, you come to our meetings. You're always incisive and helpful in terms of your contribution. But I wonder whether we're getting the best out of you and whether there's more that you can deliver for us if we only were to ask. And in that zone, I'm thinking about articulating the experience from a patient point of view, even with maybe one or two examples, so that we can triangulate, I keep making this point, what we're hearing at the top level with what's actually happening on the ground. And I think Health Watch may be able to help us with that.
Absolutely. I will take this away and have a discussion with the team from Health Watch because I do think it's important. We try to be very strategic in these meetings, but obviously the patient experience and the experience of being a resident of Worcestershire is front and centre of not only why we're here, but what we're trying to achieve is the best outcomes. So absolutely, I will speak to Simon and Victoria outside. Thank you very much. Councillor Turner, oh, sorry, councillor Harrison before I, he's had his hand up at the back, sorry.
Thank you, Chairman. For October, we've got the pharmaceutical needs assessment. A little way down the list, we've also got a reference to the Pharmacy First system. I've not done anything on pharmaceuticals before, sorry, pharmacy before. Can we not roll those in together? Because the Pharmacy First system relates to a limited number of complaints and it's supposed to be part of the decision to reduce GP's workload. So if we're going to do it, can we do it both together and perhaps take a list? So if we're going to do it, can we do it both together and perhaps take the list down a bit?
Yes, absolutely. Good suggestion, thank you councillor Harrison. councillor Turner, please.
Yes, trying to understand actually what we're actually really trying to achieve here, and I think you alluded to it just a moment ago, we're trying to find the best outcome for the residents that we're representing. And obviously, if had the most impact would be access to GP appointments. I know from my own family and so on, and they're all moaning, unless it's an absolute, an emergency, then you get directed straight to accident and emergency and then the waiting process starts all over again. So as much as these conditions that have already been mentioned, which are very, very serious indeed, Alzheimer's, dementia, Parkinson's, I know my own father had Parkinson's and just recently my brother suffered from a stroke, these conditions are absolutely very important and need to be addressed. But surely, at the grassroots level with GP appointments and accident emergency should be at the top of the list, because that's going to affect the vast majority of people. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. I think that's a very pertinent point to add to our list. So I've got the list that councillor Qmar's done, I've got the list from Health Watch, I've got the programme, the scrutiny work. I will work through with the team here and councillor Qmar, the programme of works, if you're comfortable with that. Take on board everything you've said, we'll work with Health Watch and let's set our bar high to achieve the most we can. Thank you all very much for your attendance this morning, I really appreciate it and I hope you found it an insightful meeting. Thank you all.